Waters.
Here.
April.
Here.
Gretkin.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Scott.
Here. Should we stand for asylum?
Okay, good.
Amen.
My pledge reads this. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a lot of proclamations today.
Oh my.
Most of them just as this. Somehow I might try to shorten up a little bit. I'm just reading parts from people that God, but I want all the special Olympic pieces. Come on up, guys. You guys did really well. Congratulations. The first proclamation we have is from Mitchell Betford. 2018 Special Olympics USA Games are held in Seattle, Washington, on July 1st through the 6th, 2018. More than 4,000 athletes and coaches, representing 50 state programs. And the District of Columbia competed in 14 Olympic-type team and individual sports. And whereas Sioux City West High and Sioux City Ninth, six athletes, including Mitchell Betzworth, or Mitch Betzworth, do the USA National Games. And whereas Mitch competed in the Games as a powerlifting athlete, and whereas Mitch achieved gold medal in the bench press, squat, and overall powerlifting competition, and whereas Mitch has achieved silver in the deadlift competition. Now therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City Iowa, on behalf of City Council, hereby commend Mitch Betzworth, along with his coaches and family, for this amazing accomplishment. Congratulations, buddy. Good job, man. Next, I have Billy. Okay. Reads the same, but whereas Billy competed in the Games of Tennis at the competition, and Billy achieved a silver medal in the mixed doubles competition, and whereas Billy achieved a bronze in the men's single competition, now therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, hereby commend Billy Havermon, along with his coaches and families, for this amazing accomplishment. Congratulations. Lots of bowlers here, right? J.J. Rigg, Beckner, Estrella Tejada, Anne Newton, and Ron Schmidt comprise the United Four-Person Bowling Team, representing Sioux City in the Games, the only bowling team for Team Iowa. And the United Unified Team achieved a silver medal in the Unified Doubles Competition. Australia Tejada and Anne Newton achieved gold medal, and J.J. Rigg, Beckner, and Ron Schmidt achieved bronze. And whereas in Singles Competition, Estrella placed four, and J.J. placed fifth. Now therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, on behalf of City Council, do hereby commend all these athletes, along with their coaches and families, for this amazing accomplishment. On here. On here. Here. And here. All right, thank you.
Posters that these athletes all autograph for everybody.
All right.
Oh, fantastic.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Thank you, and congratulations. Thank you.
That's all.
Next, we'll go to Airport Board of Trustees interview, David Kaplan. Tell us why you would like to serve. Glad to have you healthy and back so you can talk to us. Tell us why you want to serve and...
I'd like to thank you for waiting the two weeks between being sick and then I was flying a trip all last week. When I spoke with you a year ago, I talked about how I thought the amenities at the airport could use improvement to increase the desire for travel out of Sioux City versus the other airports. And it appears that that really has not become much of an issue. The flights are full. People are adding flights. They're working on a grant to get more flights. I think that's wonderful. I think the work that's been done is exemplary. You know, yesterday made 43 years that I've been a pilot. And at my age, I am still getting postcards or phone calls every week from the airlines asking me if I'm interested in going to work for them. There is an incredible shortage of pilots in this country, to the tune of 40,000 to 50,000 pilots will be needed in the next eight to 10 years. And I find myself wondering why we don't have a flight program here in Sioux City. We have Western Iowa Tech. We have a world-class airport, some of the longest runways, well-maintained, maintenance facilities. So the long answer to your question is, one of the things that I would like to investigate if I get appointed to the board is going in cooperation with the state of Iowa and Western Iowa Tech to try and bring some kind of flight training program to the Sioux City Airport. I think that the need is there. I think we have the expertise in this community to do it. And I think we have the facility to do it.
Good.
Yes, that's...
I know Jimmy Sponder would like to think that too, but... Yeah, I would agree. There's some potential there. Questions?
Thanks for making application.
Thank you, Dave, for...
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Mr. Moats, come on up and tell us why you want to be on the, whatever they're calling it now, the Event Facilities Interim Advisory Board.
I'm Rick Moats, 2030 P.G.D. Court. I'm 68 years old and never called any city home other than Sioux City. So I really enjoy this community. I was thinking on coming on the way down here that I'm basically standing where my father worked for about 30, 40 years of his life in the old city. So my background is in public service. I now have a small restaurant. It's my other life. And I just felt I could perhaps contribute in some way on this committee.
And you didn't use Gretkin as a reference. That helped you a lot.
I can't believe that.
I told you, I put him on there as a reference because I know I didn't have to put his address and phone number there, too.
And I even pay for all my sandwiches.
You went a little too far now.
Oh, gosh.
All right, any other questions?
Would... I'm not... We were at, what, seven people so far? Seven applicants?
Seven applicants so far. All have interviewed.
And then how do we... In the... Oh, I see Rick designated himself as a resident versus hospitality, because he does have experience as a restaurant owner.
Does the restaurant fall into...
Under hospitality? I believe it does.
Yes.
Oh, it does. Okay. He could fit the hospitality then.
I can be whatever you want me to be.
There you go. That's the attitude. That's good.
You need three members from the hospitality industry.
From my understanding, at least two more people have applied, right? Have you received that?
What I'm looking at right now, no, we have the seven. Maybe there's two people out there still...
I have two people just that told me they submitted it or they turned it in.
Okay.
Are you saying you haven't received it?
Uh, it...
Because I can follow up.
Yeah, it's not logged in to the spreadsheet here.
I'll check.
All right. Launchpad Children's Museum update.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council members. Thank you for the chance to visit with you a little bit this afternoon. Launchpad, as you know, has been open for two and a half years, and we're a little overdue to make a formal follow-up report to the City Council. First of all, a quick side note. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank you, everybody here on the council and staff members who have worked to help slow down traffic at the corner of Seventh and Pearl on Fridays. Food Truck Fridays is a very big success, and it's certainly... We're glad to be a part of it, and it's helping our business as well. Hopefully, we hope that the powers that be here at the city will decide that a four-way stop or a stoplight or flashing crosswalk at the corner will be the right solution to help protect the safety of those folks crossing the street at Seventh and Pearl. As you know, Launchpad would not exist today without the support of the City Council. We provided demolition services and other pre-construction services, a significant cash contribution, critical support for our application for the Community Attraction and Tourism Grant that the museum received, and other moral and professional support. We're very, very grateful for the service of the city's Ann Westra, who is our immediate past president, for our Board of Directors. She just did an awesome job. First and foremost, Launchpad obviously is about the kids. It's about providing new hands-on learning opportunities for children and improved quality of life for the families of our community. And I think we might have a video queued up and said she was gonna have... No, never mind. In the interest of time, we won't even... We won't mess with that. But I want to draw some special attention to our efforts to reach out to low-income and minority communities here in the area. Our access program has two primary components. One, we have a half-price membership program for all families who participate in any government assistance program. So our basic annual membership is $99, but any family that is on SNAP or any other type of government assistance program can get an annual membership with unlimited admissions for their family for $49.50. We also have a free membership program for social service agencies. This program supports nonprofit and government agencies which serve low-income families and children or other families with persons who may have... may be complex learners or have other special needs. Some of the agencies participating in that include the American Indian Council, Boys Town, Community Action Agency, Council on Sexual Assault and Domestic Violence, Jackson Recovery, Mary Tralia, and many, many others. I've heard some very moving stories from social workers whose clients might be coming out of treatment or might be coming out of a prison sentence, and they need a safe place for the parents to meet with their children someplace other than the mall that they kind of has been the typical place for them to meet. And I've had social workers with just tears in their eyes just so pleased to have the resource that we have at Launchpad for families to get together. And then, very recently, we just hired a part-time Hispanic outreach specialist who was helping us to make better inroads to serving the Latino community. And I'm sure many of you know Maria Runquist, and she's working for us on a very part-time basis now. But she and I have been out visiting businesses, the Hispanic businesses in town, to get them involved and connected with Launchpad. In addition to the play and discovery enjoyed by the kids and the quality of life for families, the founders of Launchpad made a promise of economic development. The museum is fulfilling that promise. As I'm sure you're well aware, six adjacent properties are in various stages of redevelopment. First, the three buildings immediately to the south of us were purchased by Ho-Chunk, and they are doing... They have just done an outstanding job of cleaning those properties up. And I know they're making some progress on leasing the properties as well. To the west, across the street from us, across Water Street, IBC has purchased a property, and I believe is planning to put in a new office and training center. Friend Regina Roth created a new park across the street from Launchpad. And finally, our friends at Lamb Theater are overhauling the former KCAU building. I think it's safe to say that if Launchpad hadn't been there first at the corner of Seventh and Pearl, we wouldn't see all this action on Pearl Street and Water Street over the last couple of years. And safe... I think I'm confident in saying the streak has changed a lot. If you look back just a mere four years ago to what it looked like then, to what it looks like now, I think you can all be proud of that, and I think the city and the community and all of the businesses that supported us and all the individuals who supported us can be very proud of that accomplishment and the progress that we've made. We're estimating that sometime in the next two months, Launchpad will welcome guest number 200,000 through our doors. That's 200,000 people who otherwise probably would not have come to downtown Sioux City. When Launchpad hits that figure, it will happen about 18 months ahead of original projections. And that seems like a pretty good payoff to the leap of faith that the city and hundreds of other supporters made several years ago. And I would also note that 50% of our guests come from outside of Sioux City proper. Just a week and a half ago, on a Thursday afternoon, I checked the license plates, and we had Cherokee, Pocahontas, Plymouth Counties, Nebraska, South Dakota, Michigan, North Dakota, Colorado plates in our parking lot just on one given Thursday afternoon. So we're very pleased to be able to be a good tourist attraction. Launchpad is proud to be a part of the cultural attractions in downtown Sioux City, such as the Art Center, the Public Museum, and the Orpheum. However, unlike these great institutions, Launchpad receives no ongoing taxpayer subsidies. Our operating budget for the fiscal year that just began will be about $635,000. Only about 60% of that comes from earned income, primarily membership and admission fees. We rely on individual and business donations and several fundraisers to fill that gap. We think we're gonna... For the fiscal year that just ended, June 30th, it looks like we've come real close to break even. Probably not quite there, but definitely a lot of progress over our first fiscal year. As we move forward, Launchpad is hopeful that it can continue to count on the city's support when appropriate and feasible. In the near term, the most critical action this council can take to benefit Launchpad is to expedite forward progress on tourism promotion. As I've tracked the activity of other children's museums and visited other museums across the country, it's painfully apparent that Launchpad and attractions like ours are at a severe handicap here in Sioux City because there is not leadership and coordination by a strong convention and visitors bureau. Launchpad is hopeful that the discussions you've been having in recent months will ultimately result in a vibrant and coordinated effort to promote visits to Sioux City by tourists and those in our extended marketplace. I wanted to make my comments real quickly. I'd be glad to take any questions. First, I want to hand out one more handout here.
Do you still want to try to play your video, Mr. Betz?
You got it.
I don't, but I can get somebody up here to do it.
It's okay.
Okay.
I think everybody here has been to Launchpad, so... And we welcome you to come by any other time and see the kids play. We've had great attendance this summer. Our June attendance was up 20% over last year in June. March and May, our attendance was up over the previous year. The handout that I just handed out, we have our big fundraiser coming up on the last Sunday of July, July 29th. And this year, as part of that, we're doing something called Slime a Celebrity. And we've got eight local people who have volunteered, so to speak. And you can go online to LaunchpadMuseum.com or fill out the form that's there in front of you and vote for your favorite person. I did boldface one name on there for you to draw special attention to gladly participating, eagerly participating.
That would be Dan Moore, if anyone...
Yes.
Like to make a donation. That's right.
I was looking up to make sure.
LaunchpadMuseum.com. Vote for Dan Moore. Every one of the celebrities who reaches the $1,000 threshold will get slimed. Well, there's a special prize for those that gets the most money, and that is there's a glitter bomb on top of the slime. Whoever gets the most money. So if that encourages anybody here to give an extra donation in Dan's name, you know, as long as it's not my name, that's... I'm all for that. So I did test out the slime machine on Friday. That's a picture of me there on that form, getting slimed on Friday. It does work.
I saw that.
Yeah, it does work.
I saw the video.
Yeah, the video is out on Facebook, so... That's all I have. I don't want to tie up a lot of your time, but I'm glad to answer any questions.
There's one thing you're missing.
Yes.
There's not a woman on here.
We know that. And that it's not because a woman wasn't asked. It just didn't work out.
You didn't ask the right one.
No, I'm...
I'll make sure you get slimed.
Yeah. Are you volunteering for next year?
I think she is.
Well, Dan will do fine. I would do it. I wouldn't have a problem with it.
All right. Well, we're gonna put you on the list for next year.
There you go. I'll do it. I'm serious.
Awesome. Yes, we did ask several women, and it just didn't work out this year, strangely enough. But we will make sure that we do better next year on that.
You're fine.
You tied in with any other children museums? I mean, like, if I had an Omaha membership, do you give a discount here?
If you... If you are a member... So if you're a member of Launchpad at our premium or ultimate member levels, then you can use your Launchpad membership card and get half-price admission in Omaha or Lincoln or Minneapolis, or St. Paul, I mean. And the same thing, if you're a member in Omaha, when you're coming through Sioux City, you can get half-price admission here. And the reason it's at our premium or ultimate member levels is it's at a dollar figure higher than what we would like to charge for our standard membership, but the Association of Children's Museums makes us charge a minimum of $129.
Very good. I went to the Omaha one a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, it's a great facility.
You're doing a wonderful job. We just want to thank you for all your hard work.
Well, thank you, guys. We've appreciated the support, and it's been a great run, and we look to continue to be successful in the months and years to come.
I'll tell you what, the kids learn a lot. Not just fun, but you know, when you're having fun and you're learning, it sticks with you a little bit.
Anytime you see a kid playing, they're learning, and then we've enhanced that even more at Launchpad.
Gotcha. Well, thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Four is a presentation regarding potential purchase of commercial workman's comp insurance through the Iowa Municipalities Workman's Compensation Association.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilwoman Nicole DuBois, City Attorney. During budget hearings last February, we were given direction to seek workers' compensation insurance at $1.01 coverage from the open market, which is what we've done. I have some folks here today that would be happy to answer questions. I have Don Trowmeyer, Risk Manager. I have Steve Schultz from Gallagher. And I have Tim Kurgan, the Marketing Manager for IMWCA, which is the Iowa Municipal Work Comp Associations Group. That was the only bidder that came in out of those that we solicited for $1.01 coverage. We've provided some analysis regarding the amount of claims that we've had back from 2012 forward and the increased cost that we've seen each year and the amounts that we've paid. The number of claims have stayed fairly consistent on those number of lost time claims that we have paid out. We also did bid retention of $50,000, $100,000, $250,000, and $500,000 deductibles. We see many claims that fall within those ranges. So we felt that if the city were to consider $1.01 coverage, that's probably the best alternative instead of paying multiple deductibles for those claims that fall into those ranges. There's also a calculation that's been included as to how the annual premium has been arrived at regarding our modification factor, which is a 1.46. That's where they rank just right now. There is some potential for that amount to be reduced if the council would elect to go with different coverage. They anticipate that the premium coverage could be reduced as we would see cost savings over the future years. As of right now, the annual premium that's been proposed, based on a $28 million payroll. The payroll is a little bit higher than that based on the calculation that we used. It's the $972,000 figure per year. That amount goes from initial report of injury all the way through any potential litigation payouts that we would have. So it's for handling all of the claim while in any settlement or judgment that would be ordered. Be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Nicole, the number of lost time claims that are listed in the RCA, a total of 223, you gave us information back five years. That's about 44 year... annually, but that's not the total number of work comp claims you deal with on an annual basis?
Yes, for time off of work type of claims. We may have additional claims that don't require time away out of the office or that would require hospitalization, medical care. We have additional ones, smaller ones, is my understanding. But these are the ones that result time away from the job.
So the total amount of... Listed in this information provided for the five years is the total amount paid for all work comp claims?
Yes, and keep in mind that the number of claims that are there, the dollar figure, there still could be claims that have not been settled that are included. So you have reported claims, but the dollar value doesn't include all settlements. We still have some that are outstanding for those previous years that are listed. And I should note that if this coverage is selected and we have direction to go forward, we still have outstanding claims that need to be resolved, which would not be included as part of this premium amount.
What would be the deductible again, did you say?
Deductible going forward, which may... It would be adjusted a little bit because our payroll figure is different than what was originally submitted. That's the $972,625 per year. That's the annual premium for all medical costs and any awards.
Okay.
After our calculation, it can still be adjusted based upon the coverage you said.
Sure. We just... We have to make sure that all of our figures are the latest figures. We anticipate it will be very close to this number that's been given to the council.
Is this a one-year commitment?
This is a one-year commitment, yes.
So after one year, if we don't renew or they don't renew, then claims are handled under the policy?
Any reported...
New claims?
Yes, any reported claims during that policy year would be handled going forward. However, once that date, once the coverage would be abandoned, then we would have to secure new coverage going forward. We have a policy that's in place, I believe, until October with the $500,000 retention or deductible right now. That's the premium of $115,000 that's been paid for the year. That would still be outstanding. However, if we elected to go with a different coverage, we would probably have to forfeit the remaining amount of that premium that's been paid.
Are these numbers that Mr. Gretkin referred to earlier, the five-year period? Does the insurance carrier... Are those numbers high in their opinion? Are they low? Are they... Where are they as far as where we are? They seem high to me. And wasn't it last year that the council voted They seem high to me, and wasn't it last year that the council voted to have a safety officer in place?
Sure, we've reopened...
I see, and I see one of the benefits we have here is to, is that they would provide safety consultations?
Correct.
And work directly with the city to promote safety, and maybe we need to do more of that so that we can get the claims down, but I was wondering if they thought these numbers were high in the ballpark, low, and just where they were?
Well, I can ask for their comments related to that, but with the modification factor, that 1.46 that they've given us, that indicates it's probably a little higher than where we want to be.
It's higher than what it should be.
So it's, oh, because of the 1.46?
Should be one, if you're, if you're ideal, it's one.
Sure, this is Steve Schultz from Gallagher.
Good afternoon.
Steve Schultz, Arthur J. Gallagher, 472 Blue Sim Trail, Dakota Dune, South Dakota. Nicole mentioned that 1.46 experience mod, so to answer your question, Dan, that number is suggesting that our claims for the last, I'll say, four years are 46% higher than they should be. So 1.0 would be industry average. So, answer your question, yeah, that number does suggest that the claims activity is greater than it, than expected.
Okay. Either by dollar amount, or by accident, or both, right?
Well, it's, it's both. It has frequency severity, and premiums paid versus claims.
If it's not, yeah, right.
So realistically, the idea is...
High, they will pay out?
No.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Does the experience modification factor change on an annual basis? You reevaluate and...
Every year annually, on the same date.
On the same date?
And it always looks at the last, three out of the last four years.
Okay.
So one year will drop off, one year will come on, so it's always a three-year snapshot.
Thank you.
So this is just a one-year contract?
It would be. What we're asking for today is direction of the council, whether you would like us to secure this coverage, or continue forward as we are, if there are any other changes that you would like to see. But it would be a one-year from when we would bind the coverage.
So, how many companies bid? Just the one? How many were invited to bid?
There were four different brokers that were approached. We had several companies that were interested in the $500,000 retention, which is where we currently are, and we were looking for something closer to $1 coverage to report back to the council.
Yeah, if we would have gone with the, even a $50,000 deductible, there would have been a lot of claims that would fall into that category that we still would have had to pay. So why pay a high premium if you're still going to pay up to $50,000 in medicals or lost time? So if you do that, we're not saving anything.
So we felt if there wasn't $1, savings would be negligible, or just, yeah, not very much?
You'd just be spending more money on top of that. The premium savings for $50,000 deductibles miniscule, as far as the payout.
Sorry, Don Trowmeyer, Risk Manager.
He's a rule breaker, right?
He is a rule breaker.
So, where our hope is, if I understand this correctly, under this proposal, we would, which will, if IMWCA would do the following, talk about the loss control, the claims, and, and human resources, working with them, and company, and so, our hope would be that if we do all of this over a two- or three-year span, that, that our premium, our total annual premium would decrease enough.
Well, it's only going to decrease if your work mod, if your mod goes down. It's only going to decrease if your mod goes down.
But, but hopefully, we would have fewer claims because of all of these amenity, I don't, amenities, not frankly...
But if I'm just saying this, I'm the guy that pushed this, and I'm going to look real stupid on the League of Cities Board, because we're actually the board kind of over this insurance deal, and if this thing blows up, we're the largest group in this insurance company right now, by far, by far. So I hope the city's committed to listening. They have great safety officers, they have great claims coveries, they have, they're very good at what they do, they have a great staff, but they're going to expect some compliance on safety and those sort of things, that is a really change in the environment around here. And so if we don't get that, not whether we're going to renew, it probably will be whether they will renew us, if they don't see some significant change in how we...I'm not saying we're doing anything wrong, but they're going to come and live with you. Don't you gather that? I mean, that's what they do.
I'll come up here and do it correctly this time. Don Trowmeyer, Risk Manager, that's the key, right there. There's going to be a tremendous change in regards to how workers' comp is handled in the city, and I'll give you examples. There are, you're talking about 24-hour contact to their claims people. We're going to have to do some intensive training on our employees' part to get them to comply to that. We're going to have to monitor, plan whatever it takes in order to make this work, and I think we're committed to do that.
No, and I think they, I think they're very good at what they do from, I mean, I've been on that board now for three years, I think, but yeah, because I'm up this year, and they always talk, they bring these people in from that side of the building, they're on one half, and we're on the other half, but it's the same, they're, they're over the top of, well, I bet you they'll have a guy in this town two or three days a week, every week, working with, with our people, trying to make sure that we understand not only how to handle a claim, but also how to make sure we work safely around here.
And the communication is going to be a key also, something we're not used to.
But it is a significant savings over what we budgeted, so... Miss covers roughly how many employees, because, and then would you explain to me how fired...
Everybody but police and fire.
That's correct, it's everyone except for police and fire.
About how many, just roughly?
Well, I think we, I don't...
Police and fire, you mean? Our total, oh, okay.
Those, that's chapter 411, this is chapter 85.
See, that'd be 500 plus.
No, I'd say 500.
How many?
500 plus, right?
Yeah, I, I thought I saw somewhere 589, but I could be a little bit off there.
All right.
It also includes seasonals, you know, part-timers, yeah.
The fired police are totally separate.
Yes, yes.
Which those claims would still be handled in the way in which they're...
We did not bill, bid it, but they also have a program to process those claims. I think, let's look at this one first, and then in the future, you may want to look at that also.
Oh, there is a similar program, though, Don.
Yeah, that's correct.
Just to handle the claim, though, not, not to handle the actual...
No, just to process claims and so forth.
Just the processing.
Yeah.
Because right now...
But we can do that right now, in-house.
Right.
Okay.
We as a repricing company on the 411 claims, but Donna's still handling all of those, and staff in our office.
So, one last question for me, the city would have to continue to staff a position to collect, transfer, receive, and monitor, and I talked to Don this afternoon on the phone, that we're not talking about hiring an additional employee, we have that staff available to do that and to keep up with this?
Yes.
Yes.
No, there's definitely going to be no additional employees.
Okay.
No, this should hopefully lighten your load a little.
Yeah, it will be.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate the information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's our next step?
I'm just seeking direction as to what the council would like us to do. If you would like us to proceed for securing coverage and binding the policy, we will do so.
And put it on the agenda, future agenda, you mean?
Yeah, just proceed, get more details.
This is just a presentation, correct?
Get more details, and then bring it to the agenda for approval.
Well, I would like to see that.
I'd like to see you get it here as quickly as possible.
And I would too.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to the consent agenda, which is items 5 through 12B. You can consider them to pass unanimously unless a council member asks for a vote. If you want to speak on any item on the consent agenda, please come up as I read it and state your name and address. If you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizens Concerns, and again, state your name and address for the record. I'll move the consent agenda. Second, 5 is the reading of the City Council minutes of July 9, 2018. 6 are resolutions assessing a $500 civil penalty against Sam's Mini Mark 711 Ford and Drive for violation of the Iowa Beer, Wine, and Liquor Laws. 7 is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the hail-damaged roofs and buildings project. 8 are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a rental agreement with Siouxland View Hockey Association for the ice and locker usage of the IBP Ice Center.
I had a question about that. And Matt, I apologize, I should have given you a call earlier, I was just thinking about it today, or Mr. Patmore, I had a question, maybe it's more appropriate for you as well. Where does this revenue collected go? Does it go into the general account, where...
Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director, this all goes into the IBP Ice Center operating budget.
Perfect. That's kind of what I want to know. I was just thinking about Chautauqua and the money that we're taking in, putting back in that facility, I just wanted to make sure it looks similar where we were going to be.
We put that plus on back end.
Yep, largest source of revenue for the Ice Center, this contract.
Thanks, Matt.
B is a resolution approving a development agreement with Lakeport View for a residential development at 421 Indian Hills. I need to abstain on that item, conflict of interest. The Rose Hill Park Improvements and Expansion Project. D is a resolution approving Amendment Number 3 to the Engineering Services Agreement with Clear Engineering for the North Lewis Boulevard Water Main, 1st Street to 31st Street Phase 3 project. 9 appointments to boards, commission, and committees. A is a motion appointing Dennis Hill to the Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term. B is a motion appointing, three-year term. The two members that did not make it on that, one of them didn't apply, and one of them did, I think, Kocher and Custer, right?
Yeah, Mark.
Mark did interview, didn't he?
Right. I, I really wish, I mean, listen, everybody serves on the Board of Commission, but they served at a very critical time. I wish we would prepare a letter of thank you to them for all of us to sign, because back when they got on, nobody wanted to get on this.
Yeah.
And they, they shepherded that through and got it to be a lot more active committee than it ever was, so I would hope we would write them a letter and thank them. C is a motion appointing Anna Vess Weber for the Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term. D is a motion reappointing Jason Gary to the Planning and Zoning Commission Board of Adjustment for a five-year term. E is a motion appointing Ryan Ross to the Planning and Zoning Commission Board of Adjustment for a five-year term. 10 are applications for cigarette, tobacco, nicotine, vapor committees, see the list come forward. 11 are applications for beer liquor license, see the list come forward if you have any questions. And 13 are receipt amendments, see the list come forward if you have any questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items, please come forward. 13 is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specifications for the Rose Hill Alley Inlet Sidewalk and curb replacement ramp improvement projects, I'll move that.
Second.
14 is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the Bridgeport Roadway Improvements Phase 4 Harbor Drive and Murray Street Intersection Improvements Project, I'll move that.
Second.
15 is a hearing resolution approving plans and specifications for the Annual Sidewalk Ramp Program, I'll move that.
Second.
Gordon, I did have some questions about just the sidewalk program. If you could, it doesn't have to be right now, unless you want it to be right now, or it could be during council concerns. I just wanted to talk about that, would you rather discuss it now, or at the end?
Now, let's go council concerns, because people are here for the deal, please. 5-0, that passed. 16 is a resolution approving submission of an application to United States Department of Transportation Build Grant Program to assist with the 18th Street Viaduct Project deferred from July 9, 2018, July 9, 2018. I'll move it. Make a motion. I'll move it.
Second.
I have a comment about the Viaduct project.
About which one?
The Viaduct.
Okay, state your name and address, please.
Arden Jasper, 3024 Kensington Court. I've lived in Sioux City 50 years, I use the Floyd River Trail a lot to get downtown. One of the unintended consequences of building that viaduct is that you're going to close off 28th Street at Floyd Boulevard, and that's my route from my house to the Floyd River Trail. And it seems totally ridiculous to me that we just got through spending 1.2 million on a bridge over the railroad tracks for a bike trail in Leeds, and now we're going to close off access to that same bike trail. And it's awfully selfish on my part, I know, but there's a new housing development going up, and you're going to have a ton of people sitting there, looking at the trail, but not being able to get there. And then you might say, well, go over the new viaduct to get there. Well, for me to do that with my bike, I would have to head down Floyd Boulevard, I am not riding in a 35-mile zone, not with the ability of the drivers in Sioux City, that, that's the last place I want to be. So, I'd say, don't do it, I think it's a terrible idea.
Thank you.
Okay.
Over the viaduct, the only one.
Be the viaduct or go north to the new bike, up to Leeds and connect over the new bridge.
Yeah, the problem is, what he said, though, he's got to get from 28 down to 18, which is a long ways.
I'm sorry, I was just asking for clarification, I was trying to get my... If I could add one more thing, I'm guessing that when you close 28th Street at Floyd Boulevard, there are going to be a lot of trains that just sit there. Now, I can cross the street, but I'm sure that that won't be the case. I would, I would bet the farm that it won't be.
I think you're exactly right.
Where, where do the trail sidewalks start on the east side of the road on Floyd going north? Do they start where Pizza Ranch is? Are, is there, are there any plans, maybe Matt knows, are there any plans to go...
Matt's not here anymore.
Back?
As you build, they will.
Yeah.
As, as you build the trail, that's part of the deal, everybody that builds there has to put a 10-foot trail in.
Okay, but they won't be able to get all the way back to 28th Street, though, will they?
No, because we don't control all that ground.
Yeah.
The only way you could do it is to go on the other side of the street by Sutul.
And Jill Wondershite, Neighborhood Services Manager, I just wanted to clarify one item. The Siouxland Trails Foundation was at the public meeting, provided a letter of support, reviewed the plans, as did the Siouxland cyclists as well, so I do know that the engineering staff made an effort to reach out to them and get their feedback, too.
It was looking at the connection, and they supported the project.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Thanks, Jill.
Rick Corey, owner of Alignment Specialists. I first want to thank you for deferring this to this week, I probably ain't any better ready for it, but I get pretty nervous. This is my livelihood that we're talking about, and I'm, I've been battling it now for several years, every two years, it seems like, this comes up, and I was going to lay out all my reasoning, but I was told that this is just to vote whether to turn in the application, is, as far as you're not determining whether you're closing 11th, 28th, or, I'm confused now, folks.
Well, the application states we're closing, so I don't want to mislead you either.
I'm sorry?
The application clearly states we're closing 10th and 28th Street, I mean 11th.
11th and...
11th and 28th, but is that subject to change by council when we look at the contracts? It's in your, it's in your agreement.
Yeah.
So you're closing if you get, if you accept the terms of the grant.
Okay.
Answer your question.
Okay, I was told different when I got here, so, all right, I'll continue on. I guess the city's wanting to close it because, or, or put this viaduct up for safety. I have no problem with safety. You're going to put about 11,000 to 12,000 cars a day over a 500-foot viaduct. If you close 11th Street, which handles more than 5,000 cars a day, 18th Street, over 4,000, and a little over 2,000 on 28th Street. I think that's a lot of traffic to go over a 500-foot viaduct with bean trucks stacked up down there on Steuben Street. I just don't think that's a, a good decision. There, you're going to involve in, you talked about the bike trail and pedestrian walk going over it, you're going to have a sidewalk, if I understand that right, from over the viaduct up to Hoven Street. A sidewalk is not a trail for bike cyclists, and I, I can relate to that gentleman that was here. I ride bike. We've been told that we are not to ride on sidewalks. One bad thing about this town is we have no bike lanes on any of the streets that I know of, and you're always at risk. Might share something that was brought to my attention, Sioux City is ranked like eighth in the country for safety for cyclists, as far as bad. 28th Street and 18th Street, there's, if you have to wait for a train, you have to wait for a train. There's three options there, plus four other options to cross those tracks. They talk about the O2, CO2 emissions, because people are waiting for trains, and I believe I was here one other time to argue that, that you're worried about a few cars at a train intersection polluting the air, but we can line up 100 tractor-trailers sitting there, running all day long, and polluting the air, but nothing's of any concern there to anyone but us that work there, you know? Traffic delays, that's part of why I say you got a lot of options, you got 6th Street, 4th Street, you got the Outer Belt Bridge. I mean, I go to work there every day, folks, I test-drive cars every day. That intersection on 11th Street is not plugged all the time. You're building a viaduct, like I stated before, you're building a viaduct that takes you nowhere. Heading west, you're going to dead-end into Floyd Boulevard, you've got a lot of traffic on Floyd Boulevard. Now, are we going to be able to control that traffic with streetlights? I don't, I don't believe that we've done a great job on Hamilton Boulevard, you can sit through four lights before you get through, and you're taking 12,000 cars, I, I see a traffic jam. You also have a concern, as if they come down Floyd Boulevard, usually they're coming at a pretty good speed there, and if you're taking the road, straightening it out, you're going to put that intersection a third of the way up, so you don't see that light until you get around the corner. Wintertime, that could be dangerous.
I'm trying to give you extra leniency on the time, but we are going to...
I appreciate it. The emergency vehicle thing, they all have access, they're, where they're located, Leeds... located Leeds and Greenville I guess since I've got a time thing I'm gonna just go to this and let it be done as a business owner you're using numbers that were presented two years ago for the grant construction costs have gone up severely gone up do we have a guarantee from the railroad of how much they're gonna pitch in how much Cargill's gonna kick in and what's it gonna cost us to relocate the food bank in Sube Honey are all these figures new and up to date so you're looking at the same number that you looked at two years ago and being a business owner I wanna know the bottom line what's gonna cost me in my return on investment and I don't think we can go off of two-year-old numbers today.
You're talking about the twenty-one million dollar.
Twenty-one million dollars.
Projected construction costs.
And do you have anything signed from Cargill that they're gonna give so many dollars?
We do.
Or the railroad?
We do I did follow up the city manager on that and was told we do have written commitments and let me give you those amounts because the build grant would be fourteen million nine hundred forty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars the city's investments two million seven hundred sixty-two dollars and.
Two.
Two million seven hundred sixty-two thousand two hundred dollars two million seven hundred sixty-two thousand two hundred Cargill is six hundred fifty thousand dollars Union Pacific Railroad is two million dollars you have this is above the required contribution the two million dollars.
The two million is above yes.
Canadian National Railway Canadian National Railway is three hundred thousand dollars this is the required contribution based on percentage so it may go up if costs go up and then the Iowa Department of Transportation is sixty thousand dollars I asked what would happen if one or more of the private partners would pull out and not make their contributions the city would have to come up with the extra funds and I asked what happens just the point you're making now about total project cost which is the estimated twenty million seven hundred contributions on a pro rata basis the city will have to come up with those extra funds and then I asked if we do have written commitments from the four private partners and the answer was yes.
Four private?
The two railroad.
Dollars.
The two railroads.
Okay dollars you gave me.
Iowa DOT yeah.
Okay.
And Cargill I didn't have those answers for you earlier today.
Okay.
And I guess to the question as far as have costs gone up I mean do we have an answer for that has are we going off of the two years ago figure for the roadway I don't know if Gordon you can speak to that or. How is the cost estimate of the project in its entirety?
Hi Gordon Ferris city engineer the numbers are current and we do have a contingency in there of about seven percent.
So the estimate for what the grant would cover would at this point in time the numbers are up to date of what we estimated would cost.
That is correct and these are off design plans so this is not just.
I answer your question.
That answers that.
Yeah.
Who's paying?
I mean I know not everyone but at least that question.
Who pays for the move of the food bank is that in there?
That is in there also.
In Sube Honey?
Yes it is.
Two years ago it wasn't.
I can't speak to two years ago.
My question for that Gordon is that is it like a line item or how much money is available for those relocation if it is part of that do we know how that breaks down?
We do have set number aside set in there for that.
Okay.
And it's an estimate too.
Okay.
How much was that?
You didn't against yourself if.
Well I know.
Yes.
Well I thought you said an amount that's what I was.
I know.
Seven percent of the he said the contingency fund was seven percent of the of the total cost of the project?
Yes that is correct but of the moving costs of the relocation costs that's what you were asking right?
Right.
Correct.
Yeah that number's in there also in the plan.
Correct.
So that's the that's not included in the contingency figures relocating or it is included?
It is everything.
It is included okay.
Yes.
I wanna I wanna clarify something else mayor because I talked to Mr. Corey just before the meeting started I want I need clarification for myself because I guess I'm not following what the rules are if Mr. Corey submits a petition by Sioux Cityans saying we want it specifics to eleventh street as I understand.
Yes it is.
We want eleventh street kept open not closed does that kick in the super majority vote by the council do you need four votes because of petitions submitted?
Correct our procedure.
And what am I thinking of where a petition is.
Zoning issues zoning issues.
That's strictly limited to zoning so I'm off base on that Rick I apologize it's not.
But we do take the petitions in and we file them with the clerk's office sometimes they're filed ahead of time before the council meeting with the clerk's office and they become part of the record of the council.
So it's just on zoning rezoning matters.
Okay but the way I understand it is if we pass this today the deal is we close eleventh right?
Well that's if we get the grant.
Right that's what the grant says so your petition's not gonna do any good because it'll be too late.
That our hands are tied.
Our hands are tied because the petition has to go in on Wednesday.
I understand that.
Not the petition. No not the petition.
Petition Nicole said right has no bearing we're not a petition government you have the right to submit you I mean that's that's great that you do but it has at the end of the day in our form of government unless it's a reverse referendum on a money issue has no bearing on the decision it does show citizens may have concerns I get that but it has no actual super majority requirements it has no well we could have changed that you got him on Wednesday it wouldn't have mattered I just want you to understand that.
Okay.
But if we vote today it's gonna get submitted Wednesday.
But the petition is just submitted so that the clerk has it so that anybody in the public.
Well I can submit this letter with the signatures this letter that the city put out to the Honorable Elaine Cale Secretary of Treasury of Transportation you send out a letter or put it out on email for us to vote in favor of agreed with it so I can scan it and change it and attach all the signatures and stuff to that.
Yep and you can submit that to to her as well that's right.
And we do have a petition form format that can be provided.
I can't hear you.
Sorry Rick we have a petition format that can be provided by the clerk there is a certain format and how we accept those.
You can come to the city clerk's office and we'll you can come to the city clerk's office and we'll instruct you on how to do it because you can't attach signatures to something that's already.
Well she can do it whether the Secretary of Transportation's accepts them or not that's their business not ours.
You basically just send them this letter wanting them to sign that what's the difference?
And just to be clear whatever is submitted to the state that's different I'm just talking about our internal procedure for taking it so.
Just going to the state.
Nope I got you.
And I guess my question too Gordon is that even an option I know not as written but is that something we looked at at all as far as keeping any of those open that's those aren't possibilities because that's not meeting the goals or the end.
That is correct it just doesn't meet the goals and that's not how we submitted it and that's how we presented it when we got the grant money to do the design.
But this is a bill grant not a tiger grant so that's the other difference isn't it?
Yes that would be the only difference at this point we didn't get a tiger grant for the construction.
Right.
Well let's be clear though I mean I really have to be clear on this as you can tell I even get lost in the procedure these written commitments are not without conditions so in other words if we say well we're gonna keep eleventh street open because we only have to close two right so we could close eighteenth and twenty-eighth are we required to close two?
We're supposed to close all of those that are on that.
You don't you just take a chance that you won't get graded as highly you've chosen that to get a higher grade and to get more participation by the railroad let's be let's be honest here if you you made that election I understand why but but it wasn't an election that you could submit that grant without any closing anything other than eighteenth street now it would grade poorly I understand that but the reality is you could submit it that way.
But you're right though the we would probably lose some of the commitment from those other from like Cargill.
And so we have to decide I have to decide as council person so is would be losing those private commitments is that worth it to keep eleventh street open is it worth it to keep twenty eighth street open that kind of I mean just to really get everyone on the table.
Nothing's clear anymore.
We're two days away from a deadline I wanna make sure you know you might not agree with my vote Rick but I wanna at least make sure I make an informed decision based on facts and not on well this is what we think it is so that's why I'm just trying to clarify it and that's the case we would we have up to three million dollars we potentially could lose if we wanted to keep one of them I won't even favor one over the other eleventh street or twenty eighth I mean eighteenth is that almost has to close doesn't it?
Eighteenth has to.
Yeah.
You know two years ago there were forty-five business people here and we were all asked to vote whether to close eleventh street or not only one person voted to close eleventh street and everyone knows it was Cargill why are we considering the busiest street the only street that goes east-west through this town doesn't dead end there it's had four accidents since two thousand six which is a pretty low number and then you're just cutting off one of my legs I have four streets access to my building and I bought that building with that intent and it has helped my business severely because I have a lot of traffic that comes from the south that comes up Floyd turns down eleventh and is at my building and you vote to cut my legs off right under me the big boy railroad and the big boy Cargill if people can't wait five ten minutes for a train or go to another intersection boy life's too short for those people I travel that every single day more than once my feathers are getting ruffled and I'm sorry but business is business.
I don't I don't think you need to apologize at all you've got your business you've got a great reputation with your business and you've got to state your position and you gotta make that known to council and to the public my question you hit another point that what's the design for what's the capacity of vehicles to go over that viaduct I mean usually we have a maximum don't we I mean you know fifty thousand vehicles a day.
To be honest with you I don't have that number I know it's out there I just don't have it memorized.
These numbers are for a twenty-four hour period though they're not just like all of them are going across.
Well and Dan.
Right.
We should point out we talked in the public works meeting and Rick has used the figure eleven to twelve thousand vehicles per day.
Right.
Would go over the viaduct.
I can't guarantee that but I'm combining the.
No I understand and I don't know where those numbers came from but I can tell you in a discussion at the public works meeting day we it was brought to my attention for sure and I had the information available previously with the hard copy that we received but the the actual traffic that crosses those three well if we include eleventh and twenty-eighth and eighteenth yes is roughly according to this and Jill might wanna help me in case I'm messing this up but it's off eleventh street there's about thirty-seven hundred vehicles a day off of eighteenth street thirty-three hundred vehicles a day and off of twenty eighth street about seventeen hundred vehicles a day and the study found as part of developing the plan the transportation plan for road and rail traffic the study found that the Canadian National and the Union Pacific crossings at eleventh eighteenth and nineteenth and twenty eighth street in a total delay of motorists for nine hundred and thirty-two vehicle hours per day so it's not.
I don't know where you got your numbers I know where Dave Carney gave me numbers two years ago and those are the numbers I'm using he's your city engineer or whatever he is I'm using those numbers from two years ago and I believe me I have not seen a black rope across the road counting traffic since then.
These numbers come from the Iowa Department of Transportation?
Yes.
Yes thank you and they do them every four years three years?
Four.
Every four years so the last one was fifteen next year they do again and it made.
The ones that rode that run the meter with the cord?
It's not always a meter now anymore a lot of times it's video you don't even notice it it's all.
So if she did it in fifteen she hasn't signed up to do it till nineteen and in seventeen I was given these numbers I'm confused I'm not getting the whole story.
I don't know the numbers that Dave gave you back then.
I I gave them to you.
But if we if we chose to not close one of those three intersections we'd have to make that decision this evening right because the application goes in Wednesday or is due on the eighteen.
Due Wednesday yes.
Yes.
That would take some changes in the application.
We you know if we put that application in and leave out a street we may not get any of it.
It's possible.
So I understand where these people are coming from I I'm I've been in small business I get it all but I think for the future of Sioux City I think we need to do this and.
Five hundred foot viaduct it takes you to more railroad tracks.
We're talking getting people from one side of town to the other we're talking.
Yeah eleventh street does Rhonda.
We're talking about fluid traffic.
Everybody listen to you we're gonna have a chance to talk.
Okay.
Okay and we're not gonna.
I just don't understand what you're saying.
All I'm saying I'm talking about fluid traffic I'm talking about the future of Sioux City.
Floyd Boulevard is not being affected right?
I'm talking about getting people from one end to the other that's what I'm talking about.
North and south or east and west?
I'm talking from Floyd to Morningside.
Floyd to Morningside.
East west.
East west.
But that's my point you go east you're hitting the Burlington Northern Railroad tracks you know like the paper wrote two years ago that it takes you to Lewis Boulevard totally misleading it doesn't take you there it takes you five hundred.
Let's spend twenty-one million dollars for a road that goes to another set of railroad tracks.
Again we're gonna have some rules here today we can't record without you coming to the microphone and stating your name please understand that the clerk has a difficult job in these meetings alone when everybody's talking over each other so please wait your turn Rick I'm gonna ask you to stand down now and let these rest of them have their.
The Food Bank of Sulan and we're located at thirteen thirteen eleventh street here in Sioux City and you've all been well aware of the work we do and very supportive of us and of course I appreciate that and I'm not here because I feel strongly that the application has reached a certain level I lobbied a couple of years ago for please don't close eleventh street I understand it's part of the package what I wanted to mention to you today however is please be aware I asked some questions and it is my understanding that there's two and a half million dollars in this budget dedicated to acquisition and relocation and that's not just for the food bank of course that's for the building across eleventh street as well and so that's a big undertaking for two and a half million no one has yet appraised our building no one is able to give me any detailed information because it's premature the grant hasn't been submitted the funds haven't been approved and yet it leaves us kind of in that gray area of gee what's the future but I can promise you this that if the grant is approved and this project goes forward and eleventh street closes and the Food Bank of Sulan has to relocate given the size and given the requirements of our building that two and a half million split between us and the other parties involved is not going to handle what it's gonna take and that means that as a small nonprofit providing essential services to the Sulan community we're gonna be asked to step up to the plate so that we continue to operate and the work we do goes on because I know you're all supportive of that that's not the problem that's not what I'm saying but I am saying that you're putting a nonprofit in a position of having to put our own resources into fundraising into capital campaign into all kinds of things that will have to happen so that our future is secure and by securing our future what I'm really talking about is making sure that the hungry people in our eleven county area have the food they need so that's a concern for me and I understand that it's a step-by-step process but without any certainty at this point in time I gotta tell you that if I didn't have gray hair I would okay I'm very concerned about what this is gonna look like for us and I know no one is leaving us out and I know I've had assurances that they'll work with us but when I heard that number I thought yeah there's no two ways about it this is going to be a challenge for us and I wanted to share that with you because I think. And I wanted to share that with you, because I think it's an important part of the tough decision you have to make today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
And I guess my question that I think, that I think Linda brings up, is, have we looked at different properties, and what that relocation would be, if businesses wanted to take advantage of that? I think this is probably a Marty question, I don't know, but whether or not, how much that would take? I mean, if we're saying that there is a figure in there for possible relocation costs, do we have an estimate, or any idea whether that will touch anything of helping these businesses move?
Yeah, I think they were trying not to say the number, but I guess the number's out there, huh? So I, I think there was a number that was arrived at from estimates, and we have talked to a couple of the businesses involved, obviously the Food Bank, and also the Subi Honey Building. We've talked to them over the, over the last few years, a number of times.
And we're confident?
I mean, the inventory of buildings is constantly changing, I mean, we had a few ideas out there last year, some of those buildings have been sold, and, you know, so it's a change. If we get the grant, obviously, we will work closely with the companies, I mean, the agency and the company, to find them a new location, and working together with all of our staff to do that. And at any snapshot in time, I mean, there was a couple of buildings that were available that looked pretty good. I know some of those have been sold, so it just depends on the market at the time, but we're a year or two away from having to, it's hard to judge exactly what would be available at that time, but obviously, they would need to be accommodated, and we would work closely with them to find them a new location.
And I'm asking, you're confident that while we are allocating for those possible relocation costs, we'd be able to cover that?
Well, it's an estimate that was come up with, and I think it's one we'll use for now, and, I mean, I think it's a valid estimate. Again, the market changes all the time, so, but, but I believe so.
Thank you, Marty.
Go ahead.
25th, 28th Street. Two years ago, this came up again for the agenda and stuff, and you guys said, well, 28th Street will be kept off of it, we only got to close two of them, 11th and 18th. So now, we're here again, I'm taking time off of work, just like him, that's how I provide for my family. I mean, honestly, who does this bypass, who's a benefit, besides Cargill and the railroad? I mean, because it ain't going to benefit my business, it ain't benefiting his business, it ain't going to benefit the Food Bank. I mean, we are an established town, that we actually grew around railroad tracks. So we're going to build a bypass that goes over one set of railroad tracks, to drive to Highway 75, to get stopped by another set of railroad tracks. I mean, you guys already sold out one set of railroad tracks on 28th, or whatever it ends up being over there on 75. They put a new sign up, says, oh, if you're sitting here for too long, and the train don't move, drive around to the bypass. So, we got Outer Belt Drive, drive out there, 5 o'clock, try to take a left turn and go west. That's about, it's almost a death sentence. I mean, and these engineers, they know so much about all this project, but I said, uh, he says, well, it ain't no different than stopping at the stop sign on 28th Street. I said, what stop sign? That ain't a stop sign, it's a yield sign. They've studied that area so good, they don't even know there's a yield sign there. I, I just don't get it. You know, you guys are, you want to make it so much better for Sioux City. We got the viaduct that goes over on Gordon Drive, we got Outer Belt that goes from Hamilton all the way to 75. How many ways do we need to get over to 75? I mean, we're in a small quarter down there anyways. I mean, you guys got so many things that, oh, it's going to expand Sioux City, expand Sioux City, expand Sioux City, but you still get to 75, and you still have railroad tracks. Are we going to build a bypass over that set of railroad tracks? Are we just going to spend $21 million on a project for a road that absolutely goes nowhere? I mean, and it's up to the city council, I mean, most of you guys are small business owners, or previous small business owners, and, I mean, this is how I feed my kids. And you guys are going to shut off a main, you know, main road right to my business. Hey, people calling the phone, how do we find you? Go to 28th and Floyd, over the railroad tracks, two blocks to the east. Now what I say?
See how simple that was? See how simple that was, what you just said? Your people, and Rick's people too also, they can use that viaduct and get there much quicker than.
No, 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 because by that time, you got to backtrack three miles either way. So if you go from.
It's a much quicker backtrack in three miles than it is sitting there waiting for a half hour.
It is?
For a frickin' train.
I'd never sit there for a half an hour, and guess what?
Well, that's my point.
My, hey, no, because here's my point. I'm not in that big a hurry. If I pull up down there and there's a train, I'll sit there for 10, 15 minutes. You know what? My life ain't that fast to hurry up and drive around railroad tracks.
Well, a lot of people's are. A lot of people have things going on.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
So do, hey, so do I.
So do, so do police cars, emergency vehicles, they got place to be. And they, they can't be going back here, and then over here, and over there, trying to, trying to get to save somebody.
Yeah, I know, that's why the theft rate's so horrible down in our area, and this bypass is going to fix that problem too, right? I mean, you, you got your valid point, he's got his valid point, I got mine. Why are we building a road that goes absolutely nowhere? Can anybody answer that? What's it going to prove in the next 20 years? What, what's that bypass going to do?
It's going to get people closer to the other side of town, that's what it's going to do.
To the railroad tracks?
No, it's going to get people from one end of town to the other.
To where? Answer that. To where are you going to go on the other side of town, over the 18th Street bypass? Where's it going to take you to?
Where do you want to go?
Well, I want to go to Highway 75. Where else would you be going if you're going east or west?
It's going to take you to High, it's going to take you to Highway 75, the only thing you're banking on is you're going to run into another train there, which.
So what?
Which could happen. I won't deny that it won't happen, but Terminal Drive runs parallel to Lewis Boulevard, there's plenty of access to go down, to get across as well. What it's doing on Floyd Boulevard is it, it will also take everybody to your shops. It will provide no time delay, it'll provide efficiencies, yes, there may be a half a mile or a mile more.
Or three miles.
But, but there'll be no delay. I first ran into this issue 25 years ago, when I was still employed with the Police Department, and dealt with the Springdale people a lot about the railroad blockages. We soon found out, as we, it's owned and operated by the federal government, essentially, and we didn't have the authority to, to, the scope of authority to issue citations to railroad trains. By allowing us to build the viaduct and to go over, well, first of all, it's going to improve the entire infrastructure in that area, but it'll, there'll be absolutely no delay, and maybe this is, I don't know if it's, Ben, I should let you finish, and then I'll, I'd like to share with you the pros and cons that I see.
Well, I'm glad you brought up the Terminal Drive thing, so your Terminal Drive goes north and south. So actually, there's railroad tracks that block that too, down there by the Old Wheeler Iron, that's not there anymore, and there's trains sitting there all the time, so you're still stuck. If there's trains, a big, huge coal train going on 75, and there's a big, huge train on Floyd Boulevard, and then you go down there, and they got a train blocking down there, you're still stuck in that area.
Yeah.
I mean, we got the viaduct that goes over Gordon Drive, that goes completely across, you can get through it. If that's not good enough, you can go to the one on Outer Belt, we just built. How old is that project?
I'm not telling you you won't get stopped on Lewis, either going west, or if you're going eastbound, because I've come up Lewis Boulevard many times, and 3rd Street, 4th Street, 6th Street, 7th Street, 11th, they're all blocked. I end up at Outer Drive, and go over to Floyd, and go back down. And that part of it will still exist until something comes up that we can either go under or over the railroad tracks on 18th Street. We have to start somewhere.
But you wouldn't have to spend no more money, because you guys already did that, by doing the bypass out there on Outer Belt. Or if you're in that big a hurry, drive all the way down to Gordon Drive. I mean, what are we, is this a convenience thing? Is that what it comes down to? Because the people that are actually in this area aren't complaining about it. I mean, it sounds like we're spending $21 million for nothing.
Well, and, and we're not spending $21 million, the city of Sioux City.
Yeah, I know. It's a federal grant from DOT, and then it's Cargill, the ones that are benefiting from it, and it's the railroad tracks that are benefiting from it. And it's also, there's a new building deal, they're building houses up on top of the hill on 28th Street, and that's how that got brought back into it, because now that he doesn't want the horns honking up there, because he's building all these new condos up there, so that's why they're trying to shut 28th Street off. So it all basically comes down to, who has the money to donate to the city, to get a road put in, to get railroad tracks to quiet, horns to quit honking, and a road that goes nowhere. Thanks for your time.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
My name's Pat Reed, I'm at 2901 Irene, Irene Street. You guys are talking about putting in the bypass, rerouting traffic, make it easier to go from one side of town to the other, but you still have to come off of it. Now you're taking roughly 9,000 cars, and putting them, splitting them between, they were before, between four roads going east and west, now you're going to split them down into between two. So you still have to deal with the traffic at both ends of those. When you come, when people come over the Outer Drive bypass, and you're coming up rusting, and you want to turn left, it, like Ben said, it's a death sentence. You, you can't see the cars coming over there. If you're driving a car, and there's a car coming over it, you can't see it. Speed limit's 45 miles an hour, 5 o'clock in the afternoon, you could sit there for 15, 20 minutes, half hour, whatever, so you're talking about waiting for a train. Now you're waiting for traffic. So you're not going to gain anything. All you're going to do is wait in another place. And then you talk about, it's a safety issue, well, what is so unsafe about it that it's a safety issue? I, I don't see where the, the lack of safety is. And if you're moving from, you know, trying to move from one side of town to the other, well, that just kind of says, well, you don't care about anybody in between there. All you care about is the people on this side of town, and the people on that side of town, and everybody in between there, you don't care. Because that's not going to make it easier for anybody in between there, just the people on both sides. So if you're on the north side, or if you're in Morningside, then it matters. If you're in Springdale, it doesn't matter at all. That's basically how I see it.
Thank you.
We really need to use our best common sense in making a decision as to whether this viaduct should be built at taxpayer expense. When this Union Pacific Railroad switchyard was developed in the 1930s, coal-fired locomotives were pulling 30 to 40 cars. Now, with five or six very powerful diesel locomotives pulling, and one or two diesels pushing, a 150 to 200-car train is the mode. Consequently, the Union Pacific Railroad should build a new switchyard. I have spoken to Union Pacific officials, and they acknowledge a new switchyard is needed. Incidentally, I checked into the Union Pacific Railroad and learned that there are 772 million shares of stock. They are currently selling for over $136. Therefore, this totals about $112 billion, with a B. The return on equity to stockholders is 49.5%, and the profit margin is 50.73%. That is really good. In any case, it's easy to see why stockholders would balk at the proposal of a new, very expensive switchyard. So, someone came up with a Band-Aid proposal of a viaduct, to ensure stockholders that they would continue to reap a terrific profit on their investment, like I said, 49.5% return. The plan is to tap various sources, like the federal government, US Department of Transportation, figures seem to change, I think it's about $18 million, somewhere in there, and Sioux City taxpayers, $2.7 million? Various reasons have been given for the need, for the need for this viaduct, safety is one. So I would like to see solid statistics, such as, how many accidents have there been? This would include identifying which crossing, the date, time of day, any personal injury, and what was found to be the source. Of utmost importance, we need to be shown the date the crossing, safety gates were installed at each street crossing, so as to determine whether the safety gates solve the safety issue. Travel time savings. It has been stated that it will amount to 470,000 hours a year by 2030. Here is a classic example where a number is thrown out without any substantiating figures. I asked a business consultant, I have known for years his opinion about this, and he said, as near as he could determine, this would amount to a time savings of 47 hours per vehicle, per year, or 12 minutes per day. This is based on 20 workdays per month. So here we sit, with our streets perhaps in their worst condition ever, and our budget for repairing them is exhausted, due to the horrific expense of snow removal last winter. And, it is proposed that we kick in $2.7 million for the Union Pacific switchyard Band-Aid. Why should we contribute any local tax dollars for an endeavor benefiting the stockholders of a recognized, wealthy Union Pacific Railroad? This viaduct is supposed to take several thousand cars that presently use 28th, 18th, and 11th Street, and it allegedly will be safer and cut down on travel time, because a person won't be blocked by a train. Afraid not, these thousands of cars will be joined by semis, traveling to Cargill, and a new company called Tri-Rince. I am told that Tri-Rince alone commonly has 35 to 40 semis a day, and we've all seen the constant lineup of semis going to Cargill. In any case, travel time will likely be increased by congestion of trucks and the longer distance to travel. Incidentally, as I understand it, viaducts are very expensive to maintain. So, I would suspect that we, the taxpayers, will have to maintain this viaduct. Okay, let's be real. Trains do block crossings now and then, but a person presently has three street options. The initial expense of crossing gates and other necessary items required are over with. So it defies common sense to close those streets, and essentially throw that money away. There are several.
Again, I'm going to, I'm going to limit you, we're over six minutes, I've been very lenient, double the time, so if you can wrap up, I would appreciate it.
I am. There are several businesses on 28th Street in the Springdale area that would definitely be negatively impacted if 28th Street were concerned. As a concerned citizen, I took the time to contact some of the business owners, and learned that they did not receive any type notice of this meeting. This is regrettable, because many stated they could not attend with such short notice. One person I spoke to is 92 years old, and has lived in her home 71 years. She told me she wrote a letter to all council members, urging them not to close 28th Street. She said accessibility to the 28th Street area is crucial. She said she remembers all too well the 1953 flood, and how frantic things were because travel was restricted, because streets were impaired. So I guess it comes down to this. Why should we, the taxpayers, bail out a very wealthy Union Pacific Railroad? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be real short and brief. It is kind of with this bypass stuff, so we guys built this, you know, the Outer Belt bypass to go 75. How many accidents actually been there lately? You guys checked any stats on that? Because I'm pretty sure even a city bus ran a guy over, and about killed him, and I'm on Facebook, just like everybody else is, and there's been a lot of wrecks there. I'm almost counting. I'm almost counting one a week lately. So we're gonna like start getting more traffic that way and then we're gonna put a bypass? Is that gonna be the outcome? Because I've never seen any stats that the engineers have brought up or even the city guys have brought up that says how many accidents actually occurred at a railroad crossing on Floyd. Has there been any of them? Have you seen any?
There's four since 2006 on 11th Street.
I mean, you haven't seen any of the other ones?
I didn't check.
I mean, how come we don't get any of this stuff? I mean, we, I didn't even get a letter.
Anything you want, the engineering department would have been glad to furnish you. Mr. Corey got it.
Well, how come I didn't? I didn't even get a letter on this ordeal.
I have no idea, but I'm just.
We deferred this from last week to this week.
Yeah, I know, that's the only reason I knew about it. My brother's seen it on the news.
Well, we did out of respect, so you could all have your say.
Yeah, and I, and Bob Scott's the one that put it off till this week, and I appreciate that. I mean, I just hope you guys.
Any information, had you wanted, either ask the council member or ask the engineering staff, they'll be glad to get it. But I'm suspecting that the number of accidents probably isn't a whole lot different than what Mr. Corey is saying on 11th Street. I could be wrong, but I doubt it. I travel that street on a very regular basis.
On 11th?
I travel that whole Floyd Boulevard. That's how I go to the interstate from my house, so.
Right, and I'm sure you probably just hit the Outer Belt deal and right on there.
No, I go down Floyd a lot.
Floyd to the interstate?
Mm-hmm.
Down to I-29?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't get it, I mean.
I don't go to 28th Street if I'm going to Headed Park, though. I do go.
Right, because you know you get caught at a train on 75, right?
I go to terminal, so.
Thank you.
All right.
Gordon, I do have a question, though. And I know that you weren't here, so I apologize for that, but my question is, all of these concerns came up, or a lot of them came up the last time this was tried to pass about closing all three and what opportunity there was just to close two of them. Do you know, I'm hearing that, well, if we didn't close all three, you wouldn't get the private funding from UP or some of the railways or maybe Cargill. Do we know what that figure was? Did we look into whether we were just gonna close two instead of the three? Was any of that pursued after the frustrations the first time around?
Okay, from the last.
I was gonna say, I cannot comment on Cargill, but with UP, they would drop down to what's minimum required by law, which I believe was around 500,000 from the 2 million.
Yeah, it's how much?
5%.
500,000.
Is that per intersection or total for the project?
Total to the project.
They're only required, question? By law, 5%?
5%.
Correct. I, last, I was gonna say, last time we negotiated with anything less than three, they bumped that up a little bit to 500,000 and that was it.
Well, as luck would have it, today on my desk was a letter from the CN, the Canadian National Railroad, who would like to make sure that I understand they want to be partners in projects in our community. And at a $300,000 commitment, you should have not put this on my desk because I'm going to personally write him a letter telling him how I think $300,000 to make his rail switching yard a lot more efficient is a drop in the bucket. So, I wish he wouldn't have wrote me and put his name on an envelope, Mr. Moore.
No, he'll wish that yourself.
And I'm not letting you proofread the letter. I'm all on my own.
And I guess, and my follow-up question, I guess, too, that is, so then would we say to ourselves, no, we need the additional dollars to include all three because they'll be coming to the table with a lot more skin in the game, right? And so we didn't look at just doing two of them because if we only did two of them, that dollar figure would have went down.
Million and a half bucks.
Correct, and, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Also, the, the whole project would change at that point where the benefit cost ratio would definitely go down. You'd have that much less on your savings on travel time and CO2 and so forth.
And the match amount as well would have been lower, so we felt like we would not be competitive at a lower amount of match, too. Based on the other awards they've made in the past couple of years.
And I know this is obvious, but I want to ask it just for the gentleman's question. We would be in charge of maintaining the viaduct, and is it your professional opinion that maintaining those viaducts are a little more costly than regular streets?
It can be, yes.
And it would be on us to maintain the viaduct, right?
That is correct.
He asked it, it's relevant. I'm on your honor.
Well, if I may, I know this has gone on a little bit, but just, I'll try to take my three minutes. I, I am in support of making the application to the federal government for the viaduct. And I've, I've thought a lot about this, looked at the information they gave, and although we will probably have different opinions, when I sat down and started looking at this, I tried to look at the pros and the cons, and, and the pros, the advantages to doing this are, I think, very important to consider, and I think they're real advantages. I know when I say improved traffic safety, you'll want to start in talking about traffic accident rates, which is okay, but from my perspective, anytime you put cars and trains together at a railroad crossing, accidents happen. I don't think anybody's gonna deny that, even if it's limited. And if it saves one serious injury, if it saves one death, it's more than worth it, in my humble opinion. I know that it'll improve response time for emergency vehicles and gives them access. Yes, there are emergency vehicles on the east side of Floyd Boulevard as well, but this will allow for no delay at all, not only for emergency vehicles, but, but for everything that's down in Springdale and all on the east side, that whole Hooven Valley, there'll be no delays. You'll be able to go over, go down, and go where you want to go. Yes, there will be some inconvenience, maybe in terms of mileage to get to work. There's no more delay getting over to the Suns baseball game, there's no more delay getting to the car dealer or repairman. It's, it's, you'll be able to go. Improved air quality, whether we believe it's important or not, there will be improved air quality based upon the facts that we used in 2016, the 470 hours that Dick shared of, of travel time savings by 2030. Emissions reductions, 226 gallons of gasoline and 18 tons of CO2 carbon dioxide on an annual basis. Elimination of at-grade crossings and intersection improvements, reduce conflicts between trains, vehicles, pedestrians, and bikes. Revitalization of using infrastructure, poor existing infrastructure hinders growth in that Hooven Valley. That's one of the big issues that I had here. The total estimated cost of the project, as we've discussed here, is $20,721,000. Almost $15 million for the build grant, almost $3 million from local match, $3 million from private partners. The city's contribution amounts to just a little over 13% of that total project. Could construction costs come back higher? It's possible. We know that, and adjustments would have to be made. The only, in terms of account, once we accepted that design grant, we would be obligated, I believe, and that may not be, we may not be held to it, but originally when it was presented to us back in 2014, we would be obligated to pay back the $1 million design grant. So it's gonna cost us that. Whether or not it has any challenges in terms of relationships with the Department of Transportation and our requests for future funding, I would hope that that not be the case, but I know that if we turn down this opportunity now, with an opportunity to improve infrastructure and the city's commitment only be 13% of the total project, we're able to do a lot more now than we would ever be able to do on our own. So I think that the advantages far outweigh the disadvantages, and I think it provides, still provides for an opportunity for traffic to flow smoothly, safely, get you there in a timely manner. That's, you know, my opinion, and instead of vehicles being backed up. Spent a lot of time on the road, over 38 years as a cop here, so I, I think I have enough experience to know that if it's regulated correctly, we'll be able to make certainly more efficient for us in the, in public, our private entities and public people as well as, you know, the railroad. So I, I'm inclined to think that the advantages outweigh the disadvantages, and, and I would support sending in an application on behalf of the city to receive build grant funds to build the viaduct at 18th Street and Floyd, so it's kinda where I'm at.
I speak to one note you made there.
Yes.
The $1 million that we'd have to pay back. If we were turned down, this is, you're legal, am I right, lawyer?
Mayors are fairly legal.
I do most of it, but.
Okay.
The tough ones I let.
All right, well, there's, well, there's three lawyers right there. Are we worried about this $1 million? I mean, if we were turned down two years ago, we shouldn't be obliged to pay back that million dollars.
Oh, yeah.
Really.
Well, Rick, I think.
There was no guarantee that we would ever receive those funds, and so there's, there is a possibility they'll ask for that back, yeah.
And Rick, the way it was presented, there was, there was no guarantee, but I was there in 2014 when we lobbied for the Tiger Grant, and, and it was made known that if, if the first step is to get the design grant, and if you get it designed and it's in place and ready to go, then it's, it, like, I'm sure, all governmental entities, you only have so much money to work with, and the United States government's no different, and you get on that list and you, and it's a matter of getting to the top. Now, Tiger went away, Build is there, it's just a different acronym, but essentially the same program, and more money in the Build program than was available in the Tiger program, if I understand correctly. So the chances of getting it, I would hope, would be great, and what makes that great is the opportunity that we had four years ago to do the design grant, so. But, but part of the stipulation was, is if you don't take, you know, if you, if you receive it and you don't take it, then you gotta pay it back. And in this case, we haven't gotten it yet, so they're not gonna put any pressure on us, but at some point, if we do get it, I believe it was stated we'd have to give it back or reimburse the, the federal government, so.
One other thought that came to mind, does Cargill have an easement for this conveyor belt that runs across the road?
Do they what?
Have an easement to have that, you know, between their buildings on 11th Street?
You mean that Skyway?
It's a conveyor belt, but whatever.
Yeah, I'm sure they have to, or they couldn't have done that.
Mr. Moore has not found one.
Well, I'm sure that they have one, but.
Because it goes years back, doesn't it, years ago?
Well, yeah, it's been there forever.
You know, you brought up the fact that it would make traffic easier flowing from, getting from one side of town to the other. You said it'd be easier for everybody, except for easier for everybody that's in between there. It's gonna make it extremely difficult for everybody that's in between.
I'm not sure that I understand why, but I'd be willing to listen.
Well, you have two ways in, that's it. You either have Ruston.
Excuse me?
You'll have Ruston to get in, in that area, or you'll have the bypass to get in that area, Hawkeye Drive. That's it. Everything else is closed off. So, yeah, it'll make it easier for everybody else, but it won't make it, it'll make it way more difficult for everybody that's in between there.
Well, it's, and, and I'm thinking a lot about the time that people are stopped and spent waiting for the trains to clear, but, but clearly we have no legal enforcement action to get them to break it up and, and move traffic on.
But what about?
And the amount of hours, and so I'm thinking to myself, going over the viaduct, you're from, from 28th Street, you're 10 blocks down, or from 11th Street, you're seven blocks down, and that's a matter of minutes, and you don't wait 10, 12.
Yeah, you do.
Minutes or longer.
Yeah, you do.
Well, no, not, I'm saying if there's a viaduct.
You still will, though. You still do it at the, at the Outer Belt bypass. You're trying to get out of there.
Just for the traffic signals, the only thing you're waiting on if it's not green.
There is no signal there.
On, on Outer Drive?
On Ruston and Outer Drive.
Aren't you talking Ruston?
Yeah. To get out of that area.
Oh, if.
There is no.
At Ruston and Outer Drive, yeah.
One thing that, that, you know, obviously you guys already made up your decisions what you want to do, but that should be something that should be considered along with this is, is putting a traffic light or something there for people to get out, because.
On the north end of Ruston where it goes on to, I would agree with you wholeheartedly. I've been on that road a number of times, and it is tough because it's a 45 mile an hour speed limit on Outer Drive.
I bet you if you drove there right now, if you went there, you could find remnants of a traffic accident right now.
Yeah, I, I don't know about that.
Because there's, there's stuff there, there's, I mean, I don't always see the accidents, but I see the remnants of them.
The north end of Ruston Street where it dumps onto Outer Drive, the viaduct that goes over.
Yeah.
It is, Outer Drive is 45 miles an hour, and it, it is tough to get out of.
I mean, it sounds, it sounds great, making it, you know, making it easier to get in and out. It sounds great until you have to deal with it. And once you have to deal with it, it isn't so great, because once you have to deal with the traffic, you know, you talk about waiting for a train, well, you can wait for traffic just as long as you can a train. Then you still have everything that you're talking about, waiting for the train, you still have. You still have potential for accidents, you still have potential for lives being, you know, people getting hurt, seriously injured, you still have all the emissions, everything is still there, it's just in a different place. Because you're taking all those people and funneling them into two different places. That's it.
That intersection needs to be looked at in terms of traffic safety, but.
And then I don't know how the other end is gonna be, but that needs to be looked at, too. Years ago, when they first started talking about this, which was what, like 10 years ago, something like that, they had a, a meeting at the library, and they were talking about doing the same thing, putting a bypass there, closing everything, putting a bypass in, and they had, they had a little model where the cars were coming down Hawkeye Drive heading south, and then people coming off of the viaduct, and they never once showed a car turning left in their little model. And I asked them, I said, well, what about all the cars turning left? And they go, well, we showed that, and they turned around and walked away. Didn't even, didn't even want to talk to me about it. But if you're sitting there wanting to turn left and you have no signals or no, nothing, cars, all these cars coming down from one spot and you want to turn left, you're gonna sit there for a while. Just like if you want to turn left onto Outer from Ruston, you sit there for a while.
All right, we're gonna wrap this up.
Thank you.
I don't know where the council's at, but we're gonna, anybody else have anything to say?
Yeah, here are my thoughts. I think you really missed the trick by not making contact with business owners down there and finding out the impact this will be for them. And like I said, I talked to a lot of them.
There's been a number of public meetings, though, Dick. I don't, I'm not sure, three or four? You were here, you were here.
These people have a business to run, Pete. They're small.
Excuse me?
Have you ever run a small business?
No.
Okay, you don't understand.
Everybody's had a chance to talk. There comes a time where we get to vote, and as far as I'm concerned, the time is now, but go ahead.
Well, I, I do want to, because I am actually, you misstated one thing, and I, I always am concerned about the integrity of our public meetings and the city council and the mayor. You know, I don't think our minds are really made up. We may be leaning one way or the other. Let me tell you, I'm having difficulty with this, and I'll tell you why, and it's on a personal level. Mr. Gretkin did a fabulous job of stating the pros and cons, and I agree with most of them. Here's what kind of struck me, though, tonight, as we're listening to everyone, listening to each other. I wish, and I don't always get my way on things, but, but I wish this project would have been one that people would have been excited about, including the small business owners, including you, Mr. Corey. I wish you, I wish everyone could have gotten on board and said, this is really a great thing for this community, and this community needs this and they need it now, it's long overdue. You know, two years ago, a year ago, I was proud of the council and the mayor and the staff and the city engineer because we were taking bold steps to try to fix a problem that's been existing for years, and a lot of issues, lot of issues. existing for years. And a lot of issues, a lot of issues come up with it. And we're taking the bold steps, let's do something about it. To do nothing, and you all know this in your business, I mean, to do nothing sometimes might be simpler than to to make the tough decisions. I'm at a point where there just doesn't seem to be the appetite for it, not only from the small business owners, but from the community at large. I there doesn't seem to be that fire, that excitement, that that this project's good for everyone. And and it's a lot different project. I I'll grant you that. It's a lot different project than what we've had on other projects. And and that's what you voted us in office to do, is to make tough decisions. I'm not complaining about that. I'll make the toughest decisions I can. But I'm going to listen to you. I'm going to listen to the community. And I'm not sensing, even in light of Mr. Gretkin's great comments and others, and this is hard for me to go, maybe go opposite of what my friends up here on the council may do. But I I'm not seeing the the excitement for this. And I'm I'm seeing more problems raised. I I'm having concerns about how do we impact the small business owners? We do hear you up here. We really do. We really do. And we listen. Just because we may vote one way or the other, doesn't mean we didn't listen to you. We listen. At least I do. And and it's and it's a tough decision. What about the contributions that are being made from the private partners? Are they are they in fact enough? Could they be more? What's really the impact of closing Twenty-Eighth Street, which I don't really care for the design, true true impact of closing those? Do we have to close all three? Can we close one? Can we close none, except for Eighteenth Street? I mean, in practical matter, the viaduct would would close Eighteenth Street. What if what impact does that have on the railroads? I've never met with the railroads, never sat down with them. What what impact does that have on Cargill? Cargill's a very, very important corporate citizen of this community. But so are our small business owners. And one shouldn't be weighing against the other. Competing interests, I understand. But I haven't sat down with Cargill to to discuss anything with them. I have relied on staff to do that, and staff has done a great job, as far as I'm concerned. But they're just, I I'm really starting to cool on this whole project. And and I've been with the mayor, served with the mayor long enough to know, I mean, part of me wants to say, well, let's get this sorted out. Maybe we can keep Eleventh Street open and still meet the needs of Cargill and meet your needs. Maybe there's a compromise there. But that's going to go on. You you're tired of being up here every two years. That could go on for a long time. And and you got to vote it up or vote it down, I guess, and we have to move on. But I I just want my colleagues to know that I'm really struggling with this. And I'm not liking the feeling I have. It doesn't, I've always tried to make informed decisions. I've always wanted to tell you the pros and cons. And and Pete knows it. I'll try to come to council and say, here are the pros and cons I see. That's what Mr. Gretkin did today, was talk about the pros and cons. And I really appreciate that, because it puts it all into a a good package for me. Rick, you've been really civil about this whole thing. You've allowed me to make mistakes on our procedures that I wasn't even accurate on and got corrected on. I want to be corrected at the time before the vote, instead of after the vote, and say, did you know that? So I guess what I'm saying is, I I'm really, I'm really not wanting to maybe proceed today. But I'm also torn about, well, come on, Mr. Moore, do you have, are you bold enough to do what's right for the community? There are problems down there. I think you'd all acknowledge there's some traffic issues in the area. Okay, maybe not. And I can respect that. I respect how you feel. You've built your business up. I get that, okay? But someday, we might need to do something. We might want to do something. And as Mr. Gretkin says, here's fifteen million dollars from the federal government, and we're coming up with, what was it, thirteen percent of a total project? That's what makes it difficult for me. But are we really solving any any real issues? And I and I and please, don't get me wrong. I love this community. Sioux City's home. I think we've got great people. You all rise to the occasion. When anybody's ever in trouble, Lynda, you know that. Anybody's in trouble, we all rise to the occasion. But I I'm just not seeing this community rally behind us at all. It's just kind of gone flat. No, no, not blaming staff. I'm not blaming council. I'm not blaming you. I don't blame. I don't blame. I I want to be part of the solution. So I just wanted to state my, at least where I am with it, just so you all know. I'm not going to try to persuade how you vote, because I know I I'm smarter than that. I can't do that anyway, even if I wanted to. But I wanted you all to know upfront, I'm really, I'm really shifting.
Okay, so.
Thank you for listening, and and I appreciate.
I got a couple things. I'm going to be real quick. Some day is here. We need to do it now. The money is here. We we need to get this filed by by Wednesday. And the the people, the way I look at it at it, Dan, is you didn't hear from a lot of people because if they had something to say, they'd have been here to say it. That's that's how I feel. We we have the the small business people here that that are, you know, right in the middle of it all. But obviously, the people around us, the rest of our community doesn't have a problem. They did not bring up big issues. So that's where I'm at. I I think that we should do it. I think that it's been passed down for what, how many years now, four or five years? And we have the money, you know, we we have, I just think we need to to push ahead on this. So that's.
My piece and kind of where I'm at. I I like council of more struggle. I I've thought about this a lot. I went back and forth on it a lot. I've tried weighing, as Mr. Gretkin did, the pros and cons in my mind, and trying to see where I'm at. One thing that I struggle with, that I wish, and who knows what decision I would have made, that I wish that I was around in 2014 when we applied for the design grant. That's what I wish, because I think that that's looming as well. I don't want us to have to pay back that million dollars. But then again, I I don't think, if I was thinking about, where would I spend twenty million dollars on a build grant in Sioux City? This is not at all where I would put it. But I want you all to think about what we're weighing as well, right? So this opportunity is there. We applied for the design grant. We got that million dollars, right? Now we have an opportunity, if we were awarded the grant, to be able to invest in the infrastructure that's there, to where they would be investing fourteen million dollars, we would be investing, say, three, right? So we're investing three million dollars for a twenty million dollar project. That's tough to walk away from, because then I think, fine, we don't do the viaduct. We don't go that route, right? Down the road, we are going to have to repair that road. Do you all understand how much it costs to repair that road? How it's going to be more down the road, paying for that, the reconstruction of that, where these federal dollars aren't available? I mean, that's going to be a lot of cost as well. And so I worry, I'm trying to balance all of that in my mind. I mean, I understand that this is not where I would be putting the twenty million dollars, but is it is it the most cost effective? And then we also have to think, okay, say, we don't go down this this path. We don't apply for the grant, and we pay back that million dollars. Does that hurt our chances for future build grants?
Yes. Yes.
You know what I mean? Like, I I wish that you all, it's very simple when you're on the other side of the bench. I I was there very recently. And and I know that it's easy to have that perspective. But up here, you're trying, I'm trying to weigh a lot of people's options. I also get frustrated in thinking about the fact that, you know, with the money that we are putting forward, that that is your tax dollars. That's that's all of yours that are sitting out there, whether you own a small business or not. And so I think about the money that we're putting up front, and the people that I think will benefit the most, as been stated up here, the people that benefit the most on this project are the people with much deeper pockets. And so when they're not coming to the table and making this a possibility, it's tough for me to to have us put forward that kind of money. You know what I mean? It's something that I'm struggling with greatly as well. And I'm just, I'm thinking a lot about, and I and I have, I want to state, they haven't been here. But I have received quite a few emails about support of the project. Because a lot of people in the community are saying we would be foolish, as Mr. Moore pointed out, would we be foolish to scoff away fourteen million dollars of federal funds of infrastructure improvement at the cost of our three? Well, if it's going to cost our small businesses for the benefit of one large business and the railroad, I don't know. I don't know if that's worth it. So I don't know if that was about as clear as mud, but that's that's pretty much where I'm at.
We're ready to vote. Let me tell you why I voted. I I agree with Rhonda. I agree with Pete. But the bottom line for me was, I had a hard enough time with this two years ago, when we were going to close two intersections. Now, this grant, we close three. That seems like a bit of an overreach for me, for the benefit of railroads, that I am not opposed to railroads, but I'm opposed to corporate citizens that want to do business in our community, that don't want to pay their reasonable share. And I don't think the CN Railroad is even close to their reasonable share at three hundred thousand dollars, because they have a switchyard as part of this as well. And I think they're they're paying the state minimum, which I find totally unacceptable in that. By the way, whoever was talking about the bike trail, I'm the guy that fought hard to get that bike trail hooked back up, because it was a mistake when we did that railroad before and not allowed ourselves a connection to the people of Leeds that deserved that connection. They had it for all those years, and we took it away from them. So now we have the potential to take away, and I drive that a lot. I see cars parked there a lot, where people walk that trail, and they bike that trail. And that's, believe it or not, is as important to me as small businesses. Family entertainment and family gatherings like that mean a lot to me as as a mayor and as a grandfather. Viadocks are expensive. The state all over the place is trying to get rid of viadocks. They're not trying to add more. Now, I realize I'm not stupid. In this particular case, that is the only solution. I get that. But if we really were going to do a build grant, and we were really going to close three intersections, then we should have a bigger vision as far as what we would do. And that I've hammered, and I've hammered, I've hammered. Hoover Drive needs to be completed. Hawkeye has no storm sewer that's in it. If you go off the road in Hawkeye, you're going down three feet. You're going to roll your car. And that road is substandard on a good day. We have people going there all the time at night with their kids to play baseball. But yet, we allow that substandard road with trucks and all kinds of traffic on it. So as part of this grant, somehow, you've got to expand that to get that traffic at a minimum. If they get over there and can't get out to Lewis Boulevard, they've got to have a way to get north or south to get the heck out of that valley. And we got to have a bigger picture for this than just this particular piece for me to vote for, if you're going to close three intersections. And that's that's where I'm struggling. It was difficult two years ago to vote for one. And now, if we're not going to get the grade because we're only going to close two, then why submit the grant? It doesn't make sense to me. So that's why I'm voting no. So we will move on to the last item, I think. Seventeen resolutions adopting plans and specs for the Hard Rock Casino and Tyson Events and the parking garage project. I'll move that.
Second.
I need to abstain of conflict of interest.
Well, we're voting this way, so. You ready?
Well, but I got to say.
No, I'm going to call it.
Call it so we can.
Hi.
Gretkin?
Hi.
Moore?
Abstain conflict of interest.
Scott?
Hi.
Waters?
Hi.
Citizen concerns. Any citizens be heard, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please. Seeing none, council concerns.
The only thing I was going to mention is, when I was checking my calendar yesterday, I check in, I saw the notice about the placard hearing. I went on to put it on my calendar, and I think I inadvertently sent it out to all of you that we were having a meeting.
That's why.
But but it's clarified, we're not having a meeting.
There's no meeting.
Yeah, there's no meeting.
I thought you were in charge of that now, so I just.
No, no.
I just wanted to say, if Pete's canceling the meeting, I'm good with that.
No. I just didn't know if it was right or real or not. I thought I was.
So there is a meeting, or is there?
There is not.
There's not.
Pete canceled it.
I canceled. Well, yeah.
Thanks, Pete. Your appointment triggered.
All right.
Yeah, that's just that one is it?
No, I'm good.
I thought I did. I thought.
Well, I apologize, but I have quite a few things.
Oh, boy.
I'm really sorry, Mayor. I'm sorry. A couple of things that I wanted to point out. Tomorrow, actually.
You want one?
Tomorrow at M's on Fourth, there's actually the next meeting for the One Hundred Men Who Care. I've talked about it in this forum before.
And women, because.
And I'm getting there. I'm getting there.
But you also have an art center meeting.
No, this is at five thirty PM at M's. Actually, our record showed up, it's One Hundred Men and One Hundred Women Who Care.
It's a joint meeting.
Get together, once you're ordered, you write a hundred dollar check. Everyone writes that check. We have about a hundred people on each side, the men and women. So the impact is huge, because then it's ten thousand dollars per group. So tomorrow night, there's an opportunity, if you want to join one of the groups, to write one of those checks and really greatly impact a nonprofit here in Sioux City. So I would really urge you to go attend that. On Wednesday, is the Rivercade Parade. I hope everyone comes out in support of the Rivercade Parade. I know a couple council members that get pretty excited about parades. So I'm excited to see them there, because we'll be there, right?
Who else is going? Because I heard we. I get to help my brother celebrate his seventieth birthday.
I'll be there.
Last year, we rode on.
Power truck?
Last year, you and me rode on.
All right. As as always, as always, we have Downtown Live on Thursday, Food Truck Fridays on Friday. Then we got on Friday, also at ten, what, ten AM, is the ribbon cutting for the trail up there on Floyd. I'm excited to be out there and be a part of that. And I believe that's it as far as events. One more thing that I wanted, or a couple more things that I wanted to mention. Number one is Jackson Hayes is in the audience today. Jackson, there you go, he's pumping his fist. He is, he is a future politician, let me tell you, ladies and gentlemen. He's a, he's a great kid, really excited about politics. So I'm happy he's here today. And then the other thing, two things, Kelly Bach did a presentation on ash trees and the infestation that's going to be happening throughout our community. There are a great number of ash trees, and it's slowly making its way here. And that's something that will come before the council. And I tell you what, you thought this was a tough decision today. That's going to be a really tough decision moving forward. So I appreciate that we're being proactive. I think our staff is being proactive on that. But he gave a great presentation to our effective fiscal and public policy team. So Don, I appreciate that invitation and that information. I was able to go out to the Special Olympics. We held them at Chautauqua Park on Saturday. There was a Western Regional Conference Tournament. I believe I got that name down right. But it was, it was great to have them here. They spoke very, very highly of our facilities. And so I was excited to have them here. They all wanted to thank the council for the great facility down there. And Rita and everyone, the whole team did a great job. The last thing, Gordon, if we could talk for a moment about sidewalks.
Well, he's coming up. Did you mention the joint meeting tomorrow?
Yeah, Art Center.
With the Art Center?
Yeah.
At the Art Center?
Because that's not public.
I'm going to be gone, so.
Oh, it is, okay.
Give out my best.
You will be?
I'll be gone.
Oh, you'll be annoying.
I I know that you've gotten a lot of calls.
Be disappointed.
I'm guessing?
Uh, yes.
Yes. So I want to start first, and this, I apologize, it can take a while, but I'd rather just, I have a lot of questions. So could you talk to me a little bit about ways that you want to improve for the next time? I know this is the first go around, and I know you're getting a lot of calls. Before I give recommendations or questions, can you talk a little bit about what you're seeing and hearing, and how we can provide clarity to people out there, or what you want to improve next time?
The main, the main thing I'd like to improve, Gordon Fair, city engineer, for the sidewalk program next year, is I would like to have some examples on our website, showing what people can do, and some of the fixes, just for examples, so they can go about that, and what to ask contractors, so that they're not taken, because we have had a couple of guys, fly by, fly by night guys, that have come in. Because we have had a couple of guys, fly-by, fly-by-night guys, that have come in and have taken advantages of a couple little old ladies, literally, literally.
Maybe to add to what Gordon, uh, Dave Carney, uh, Public Works and I, director and I have spoken, I think we need to take a look at the ordinance again. I think some of the things that by ordinance we have to, uh, send the letter and, and expect, you know, compliance with, should be reviewed, some things I think maybe are a little nitpicky as far as, but we're bound by what the ordinance says, so we need to take a look at that ordinance and make sure it's appropriate.
And I appreciate that, Bob, because that was another thing, I, I had a lot of people surprisingly call me, um, about it, and talk to me, and some people even took pictures of their sidewalk, of where they were at. And I didn't understand why it needed to be repaired. So I wanna know what that threshold is, and why, I mean, whether, cause some of it was just pitting, you know, like, or, you know, little, little chunks of it were coming up. And then others were, there was a crack, um, close to the line, but there was absolutely no change in grade or...
No, but if we, if it does have a crack and it's, it's a gap, it does have to be filled.
Yeah, and I just, I didn't see a lot of the gap, I guess, you know what I mean?
And some, sometimes the photos don't do it full justice.
Correct.
So you do have to go and see it in person, and we will consider, we will look at each and every one that people have called in and said, listen, I don't, I don't agree with your assessment, please come in and take a look at it again. We will go out there and check it.
Okay, and I, I appreciate the looking at the ordinance, cause I think that's have that clarification, that if you have questions or think that, you know, your sidewalk is marked incorrectly, please contact us, we'd be happy to do that. I also think language about the extension process should be in the letter, um, if that is a thing. If you feel that you need an extension, or if one needs to be granted to you, this is the process, this is how you go about doing it. That could be really helpful. Um, the other thing that I was talking to, I was talking to a constituent, and I was trying to think of what I would do differently about this process, right? Like, obviously, people are upset, what would we do differently? The biggest concern or complaint that I was receiving was the turnaround. You know, the time, like, I think the letter was marked July sixth, and we say by August one, you have to have it fixed.
No, no, August sixth, you have to have a permit, pull out a permit, and then, once they have the permit, then we can, um... If they, if they need extra time, we can give that to them. The main thing, the main thing was to get them in there.
By August sixth, they just have to come and have a permit to fix it. Is that what you're telling me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah? Okay, cause I think more clarity of that, because a lot of people are like, how, how long am I gonna have this fixed? By August? You know what I mean, and how am I gonna have that turned around? And I was confused by it too. This person's suggestion, whether it's a permit or getting it fixed, I think people get stuck, because a lot of contractors are busy right now. You know what I mean, it's tough to be able to do that. One suggestion that someone had, maybe it's a good one, maybe it's not, it sounded good to me, maybe you'll tell me, no, 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 we should keep it this way, was going around and making the Xs or doing that assessment in like November or late October, just before the first snow, sending out the letter and saying, look, by July one, we want it fixed, or we want it set up. Because then at least they have the whole winter months to call their contractors, call their people, and get it all lined up, when they're making those bookings, you know what I mean? And I just, I thought it was a great suggestion that the gentleman had, I don't know, maybe it doesn't hold weight, I don't...
Well, actually, I'd like to start earlier in the spring, if possible. This year, we got a late start, using the new computer system where they went out, took a, uh, took a picture or two or more of the situation. Uh, that got a late start this year, so I'm hoping to improve on that next year, so it gets out quicker, and mailing the letters out sooner. This year, we sent, we did all of these markings, we did all of these door hangers, hung them all up, and...
Matter of like month, yeah.
Yeah, and then it took us about a month and a half to get the actual letter out. So a lot of people had like two, two and a half months to do this. So we're hoping to, you know, get, get, be a little more organized next year. But new, using the new computer system was, was different for us, and we've learned a lot.
It's a learning process, and I get that, I'm happy to hear that you're willing to make changes, make it a better process.
Now, we inspected, oh, about four thousand lots, and sent out about fourteen hundred letters. So, it's quite a bit.
The other suggestion or thought I had was, um, do we ever give lists of contractors, people that would be willing to do the work?
No, we do not.
Gordon, I don't think we're, we can't vouch for anyone, so we don't provide a list.
And I get that, I get that, but walk with me on this. What I'm thinking is, me, well, I'm not, I'm a bad example. Say someone is ninety, and they live at home, and they don't have a computer, and they don't talk to a lot of people, right? They get meals on wheels, they chill in their house. How are they supposed to be able to find a contractor that's reputable? Like, I just wonder if we, even if we had companies say, well, give us your flyer, we'll send it out with our letter, I don't know if that would be...
We can't do that.
It's still gonna work, no. I'm just trying to think of ways to be able to help these people find people that are willing to do it.
They could call, and, and they could help them...
But no, that we couldn't give a recommendation either.
Yeah, we can't give a name, but we can tell them what to ask for, such as the license, the insurance, what's that?
How would they find that person, I guess, like, I'm just trying to troubleshoot for this.
There's a lot of ads in the newspaper, I've been, I've been watching that almost daily.
So maybe it's that.
Yes, there's, there's that.
Or if, if they don't find it, but then the city will come in.
You're so busy. I worry about a guy, really, I'd worry about a guy who has to put an ad in the paper right now with all the work out there.
I worry that too, yes.
So I'm saying, like, if we can try to address it, even think about that, how do, how do people find reputable, reputable people? The last thing, and I'm sorry, it's a long conversation, because I think it should be a continued conversation, I hope. Um, the last one is, um, I was talking with a business that had, has a lot on its property, and had a lot of repairs needed, right? A lot of times, these businesses have to budget for those things.
True.
And can't just cut a check right there and make that happen. And this was able to just take a permit, saying, yes, we are planning on fixing it, but it's going to have to be in the next budget cycle, and we'll, we'll fix all of them.
Well, in that situation, see, our permits are only good for thirty days anyway. So, for this situation, I would talk to the, uh, talk to the property, or the business owner, and they give us something in writing saying, yes, we will take care of this, but we're not gonna be able to get to it until this time. We'll work with, we'll work with everybody on this.
Yes, and that was my assumption, I was hoping.
No, we are, we are working with everybody, if they ask for an extension, yes, we've got no problem giving it to them, provided they pull the permit and we get going. For business ones, we understand.
Said business to pull the permit then, I mean...
What's that?
If the permit's only good for thirty days, do you want them to pull the permit?
We do for most people. Like I said, for the business one, uh, we understand it, there's, uh, the finance people for that. It, it's difficult for them to just pop in and do, uh, you know, several thousand dollars worth of sidewalk work.
Yeah.
We'll wanna have to fix it, and plus, not to mention time. Their, their time of the year to do their improvements may not be best in July.
Sounds good.
I was more excited having a problem doing their sidewalks, or...
I don't know what you're talking about, man. I appreciate the time, Gordon, thanks for taking a look at this, I really think...
What, you bid this, and so the contractor comes in and he does so many squares, what's his price this year?
We haven't bid it out yet. That's what you voted on, tonight, we're...
That's today.
Right, we're putting out, uh, a quantity.
If he buys, bids six dollars a square foot, and, and I needed sixteen square feet done, you told me, why wouldn't that be a hundred bucks? Why would that be five hundred bucks?
I, well, again, there's the removal.
Right, well, so tomorrow, you can tell everybody what their bids are. So that would give you an idea, when a person calls in and says, okay, need a hundred square foot done, here's what we're gonna charge you, right?
Here's what the city would charge.
Right, I mean, you're gonna know that number, is what I'm, cause that's what I tell people. It may be cheaper if you have a small amount to have the city contractor do it because...
And we can put that on the application next year, that they can have that option.
But you don't know what the bid is yet, is all I'm saying. So, I look forward to seeing those bids tomorrow, then I'll decide. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I appreciate, I'm just, I'm hearing a lot of concerns, I know you are. I just wanna make sure going forward, we try to think of the best.
This is the first time you've done this in years, I'm guessing?
As, what I've been told, yes.
I wanna thank you for doing that without letting us know, cause, uh, those, those deals on the door really didn't generate any concern calls at all. So next time, you might wanna send the council a memo and say, we're working the west side this year.
I, I thought we did, I thought we did kinda send you a memo.
Maybe, then, I didn't, I didn't get it.
You didn't get any calls?
No, I said, I didn't get the memo alerting us that that was...
Yeah, I did, I knew that, yeah.
I thought there was one.
I might not have caught it.
I think there was the sidewalk memo.
That they were gonna be out tagging all the morning side?
I knew it was zone eight.
We didn't spend the night, we just said we were going out and doing it.
I knew there were ten zones, and you're working in zone eight, aren't you?
Yes.
Yeah, it's either that. Zone nine's coming in.
We targeted the mayor's.
You're all done? Mr. Moore?
Nothing, Mayor.
I know you're still laboring over your decision, but that's...
That's the way I am.
Tough ones don't come easy, but you gotta make them. I move adjourned.
Greitken?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Aye.
You want me to take that and proof it?
Oh, you're... Yeah, thank...